We're up, Jerry.
Okay.
Don't have to worry about that.
We're up. I'd like to bring this, call the meeting, Board Supervisors back to order. See, we got the dedicated ones made it back. Anyway, first on the agenda would be Ms. Judy Fortenberry.
Did Buster leave at all? Did Buster leave at all?
No, he just stayed.
Do you know this thing I had to eat?
I have two items. First one is a request to approval of type registration phase. The ballot is ready to attend the collective vote. The primary class and the class and the travel.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved. Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The second item is the request of board these 2013 tax sales and its inordinate number of pin numbers. Ever since this has started happening, we've been talking with Delta about why this is happening. Finally, they figured it out. And so after all we've worked through, they're gonna quit head on. So until we get through these, that if they don't come around, we'll still have them coming up.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? I have, are you not gonna read all the numbers off? I'm just picking. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you. We was waiting on you. You waiting on to call your name. I just knew you saw it and start this way.
Yeah. I see item one petition changes. It says one 2014 version property sets the road.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Item B, request for 2014 tax sale, G915, generated correct 2013 tax statement, indicate debate.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved. Motion to approve, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
And item C, request board 2013 tax sale, refund tax sale purchaser for pin number seven, 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 six, 2012, should have been coded tax exempt. And once again, these are the same ones that Judy has to deal with and I have to deal with.
I was gonna ask.
Every year to do. And yes, I'm as tired of it as she is.
Gotcha. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? Yeah, I just want to ask you, what, you saying these are the ones that are gonna come back up to us?
These are the ones that should be labeled tax exempt.
Yeah.
They may mature to the Secretary of State's office. Well, when we set our roles in September, we may not yet be the ones that mature to until November, after we tax sale, after we have established the road and it's gone through the state.
So there's no fix for that. We're gonna continue to do that.
We...
No, that's what I'm...
That is the fix?
That is what we're hoping to fix.
Okay.
If we can get the list from the Secretary of State's office.
Prior to...
We're going to do it before the Secretary of State gives our list.
Hmm, okay. Okay.
Gotcha.
We should mature to the state, but we don't have that little certificate.
Right.
So we're going to do it, and if they don't present us this certificate, then we'll come back to y'all and say, hey, we need to resell this one.
Right.
There would be less of those.
There would be less of those than there is these.
Well, I had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Thanks. Okay, Bridgette. See there how she did? She, I knew she was next. She got up, started moving right on forward.
I just love getting up in front of everybody.
I'm talking to them, calling them.
We need to take action on the traffic striping bids that were open December 1st, and my recommendation is that we reject those bids.
That we reject them?
That's different. Yes. Robbie Robinson is the low bidder again, and there was some work that was done the last term that was not correct.
Right.
And they're, we, they've not had a chance to correct those problems at this time, so...
So why are we not award it to the second bidder?
Because the weather's been bad. We've not, they've not had an opportunity to go out. I think incorrect, I think what they have, have they corrected what they, but had a chance to do.
Yeah, they corrected most of them. They still have...
But our weather's holding us up.
Was it a big difference still in the two?
In the bids?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. It's worth waiting, huh?
Yes, and for the remainder of this, the six months until we go out for bids again, I'll just get two quotes for each road.
So we can steal stripes instead?
Yes, we can go. I just have to, it'll take a little more time.
A little more work for you. Thank you, Bridgette.
I don't know, but if we can expect anything of substandard work there, though, because I think where they're having a problem is in North Brandon Estates.
Show Mike home.
Huh?
Show Mike home.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It was just substandard work. I mean, it's supposed to be a 30 mil thick thermoplastic that's sprayed down, and it's supposed to be four inches wide.
Actually, it's water seal.
And it wasn't any of that. And, you know, it's only, you know, and it's not gonna last any length of time, and there wasn't any reflectivity on part of it, where they put the glass beads on it before it dries and helps drivers see the stripes.
Right.
And so forth, so I don't...
So what we done to correct that, Dale?
They went back over. Or, or... They like a couple of those. Just fast and just crumble on the file, whether it needed to be done, so. Most of them, they need to do those. And as of last week, they hadn't, they hadn't completed those, because I know they're not in the business. And then one outstanding CO, they have some problems this last week.
I mean, it would just make sense that if, if there's a price and it's substantially cheaper than the other guys.
Yeah.
There's a reason. They're cutting corners somewhere.
Well, I, I agree, and I've heard you make mention to it, Dale, that they're having to go back and do a lot. And I know I'm hearing, I'm sure everybody, a lot on some that need re-striping, some that just need striping because we've done the work. So I know we're behind, and some reason we're behind is because they're having to go back now and redo. And that's kinda hard to sell, you know? Oh, we're having to redo something we already did. I mean, striping, to me, like, is a...
We've had bad weather.
Pretty simple job. If they got the equipment, they lay it out there the first time. It's not something you make a mistake on unless you, like Walter's, almost like deliberately cut the corner a little bit.
We have had some pretty bad weather, you know, lately.
Yeah, but we, we talking about since the beginning, way back when we first started overlay project, some of this was striped.
From last summer?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Some of it's still not striped, and, and the weather was a factor. But also, it was because a lot of, they didn't wanna go start doing this till they redid the, where they had striped and messed up. And so the weather then delayed that from going back and doing it. So they created the problem theirself as far as being behind, partially.
Getting two quotes is not gonna be an issue. We get the roads, I can take care of that pretty quickly.
So if we get two quotes, do we have to go with the lowest bidder on the, on our bid here? Can we go with the other company?
No, we're through. Once I reject these bids, this is moot point.
Okay.
I get two independent quotes for each road.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well...
I make a motion to reject the bids for striping.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Johnson. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Well, in saying that, now, what are we, we're gonna, I guess we're gonna just keep prodding them to keep moving forward?
This is not the same contractor's got the state aid.
No, this is not all state aid we're talking about, that I'm talking about.
Shoot, all the state aid's done, ain't it?
Huh?
But there's...
Well, Mr. Dale Westbrook is next, anyway. Are these two different contractors? One, the state aid, that are doing the rural area, or the same ones?
State aid, no, that's a different contractor than state aid.
Different.
Whoever got the bid with...
Okay, who's doing the rural area?
Our regular work.
Yeah.
Robbie Robin wasn't doing it. Now, it'll be whoever's the lowest of the two quotes that we get on each road.
How long is his contract? Is it null and void now?
It's over.
It's over?
The one that he's talking about, those purchase orders were issued last six months.
Last six months.
Okay.
Prior to January 1st. We just, these bids were supposed to have been for January 1st through June 30th.
Right.
We just, that's why we just rejecting them because we can hold them so long.
And that's the reason I hadn't, I hadn't been able to turn any more stripe or lose because we didn't have a bid for it.
Okay, so where are we then?
So in June, we're gonna...
Well, we're ready now to start getting the two quotes on, on the road we want striped and see if we can get them striped. But we can do anything that we reject.
So we're gonna just, so we're not gonna do any stripe until...
No, we are. We're just gonna get two quotes.
I know.
This gonna help us.
But when is this gonna start?
Today, I hope. I can issue the roads and the representation. I can issue purchase orders as soon as I get the two quotes.
Okay.
Yeah. We just had to get, we, I could not, we could not do this until we rejected the bid. And we had, trying to give them ample time to get, you know, get their work done. That's the reason we're delaying.
All right, well, I wish we would do whatever to accelerate it because I'm hearing a lot of calls on, and, you know, when the sun's out, I know it hadn't been out a few days, but when it's out, it's kinda hard to say, well, it's the weather.
Yeah, I understand.
And they're saying, well, the weather's part of the reason we're having trouble seeing, too, because it's raining, indicating there's no stripes, so, you know.
Like, that one road that North Brandon Estates Walter was referring to, do they have to take it all up and redo it?
They just striped over. They went back over.
Okay.
All right. I make a motion to approve work accomplishment schedule.
Second.
Okay, motion approved. This is work accomplished by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Johnson. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Greg Slade, thank you, you got it, Dale. Greg Slade. We got a little bit more left of you, huh?
That's right. Basically, a continuation of our prior discussion on vector control services. The way we left it was you had two proposals before you, one from Vector Disease Control, Inc., in the amount of $220,000 for vector control services lasting from April 15, 2015, until November the 15th of 2015. Another proposal from mosquito, Mississippi Mosquito Control, Inc. That proposal is an annual contract beginning April 15, 2015, and continuing until the 14th of April 2016. And the total price of that contract is $366,000. Since that time, Ms. Laura was able to look through the budget, we found a dollar figure from, that would be last, or is it this year's budget? This year's budget is $325,000 and change. In addition to that, keep in mind that there is one full-time vector control employee and the cost of just the, was it fuel costs, Ms. Laura?
To keep him on would be about, with Bridges, about $12,000 a year, and that doesn't include the fuel costs bringing up people.
Right. Now, we're not planning on keeping anybody on, are we?
It was suggested that we do at the last time, and that is totally y'all's decision, but I just thought we had that information handy in case y'all wanted to send those figures.
So, well, I misunderstood, because I thought we were asking them to take that employee that we had doing larvicide.
And that person would be employed?
I don't know.
Correct?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Would that person be the one included in the...
Yes.
Is, yeah.
Yeah, we would, we were, our proposal would incorporate hiring the nighttime drivers as well, if that person's available, the larvicide as well. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I think what we were talking about was, we have the nighttime drivers, like they're referring to, and we have one guy who works during the daytime. He's still part-time, he gets paid the exact same that the nighttime guys do, but he works year-round, whereas the nighttime drivers just work the, basically April through November. And we were just asking if it would be possible to keep him on part-time. He has a truck, he has the larva, he does the larvicide. He sprays the ditches year-round, like they mentioned in their little presentation this morning. Mosquitoes are still growing during the winter. His job is to go and spray the ditches. So we were just asking if it'd be a consideration to, to keep him employed through Rankin County. The nighttime drivers, sprayers, would follow with them. So that's where a little bit of confusion was.
Okay, all right, well, what did, so what?
I don't see a need to do that, y'all. I mean, if we're gonna do this, let's do it.
Well, and I guess, I'm kinda like with Jay, with, with both companies, there's that are in need, I mean, y'all know, y'all are the professionals, are in need to have someone full-time during the day to do something like this if you're a turnkey?
Yes. Well, we would be using the guy during the day for surveillance, putting out traps, picking up traps, identifying mosquitoes, seeing where the priority areas need to be to address with the trucks first. It's not just send the truck out because it's Tuesday night and we're going to Brandon.
Right.
It's based on the surveillance. It may still get sprayed on average once a week, but those areas that have the more of the need are gonna get done more often than the ones that don't, just basically because you're going after, you're targeting the mosquito population, you're using the biology to guide the program.
Okay. Same question?
Yes, sir.
Same answer?
So I'm saying, are you planning on keeping, would you be keeping this particular individual on?
With the same price?
Well, like, well, like he said, he's a part-time employee, but he, but during the, during the day, he's larviding, he, you know, setting traps, field disease testing and stuff like that, and that could also...
And I know, you know, our proposal was seven months, but, but truthfully, if we were to, you know, at that seven month, and we were to continue then, that employee would, you know, during the winter, you don't, you don't have to do surveillance as much, you know, you're not getting quite the numbers, but, you know, mosquitoes, some mosquitoes over winter as adults, and you'll get warm days and they'll come out. So we want to be responsive during, during the winter as well, and we definitely do need employees during the day.
Okay, it's a simple question then, so you, you planning on keeping him on?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's at the same turnkey price?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, that, that made it easy.
I have a question about creeks.
There was a question whether, whether Mississippi Mosquito...
Hey, you need the mic.
Yeah. Thank you.
There was a question whether Mississippi Mosquito Control would reconsider a seven month rather than a 12-month program. And, and the answer is yes, we would, and if you'd like, we can discuss that now.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, you know, we'd certainly provide the same services that are listed in our proposal. Our monthly cost is the same. It would be the, I think, $30,500 for the seven months rather than the 12 months, which would come out to somewhere around $213,000 for the seven-month period. We are suggesting a 12-month program because we do feel that there's a need for it, but, you know, at the will of the supervisors at the board, we'd be happy to do that. We certainly have a full spectrum program, including the larvicide and the adult siding, a lot of surveillance, both for encephalitis and for just general mosquito population that would direct the spray operations. And then if we do have, and probably so, this area's been known for West Nile activity, we have a virus response protocol that we enact once virus is detected in an area, or if there's a person or something that comes down with that, we'll put a regiment in place to suppress the mosquito population in that area. So it, and include that public education as well as a, again, our, one of the things that was mentioned earlier is about the insurance, and we carry $5 million of coverage on that, certainly moving the liability from the county to us.
So how much do you say it was coming out to? I thought your original bill was 360-something.
It is. The original is 360, but the proposal actually talks about a per-month basis of $30,000 and, $30,500, is that correct? $30,500 per month.
Correct.
But it's for 12 months, which would come out to 366,000. But that same, that same dollar amount per seven months is 213,000, or thereabouts. 213,500.
Well, the only problem I have with that is that's great, just as me just talking, but you knew what they quoted, then you came back, and we asked to quote on, both on seven, I mean, the same thing, and you quoted, you knew what they quoted, so now you came back. So that's kinda puts them at a disadvantage.
We didn't change our price, though.
Huh?
We didn't alter our price at all. It's the same price, except for...
Well...
Time shop come forward, listen, Mississippi Mosquito Control, we're talking about you guys' proposals, and y'all will, that way we can have it all recorded.
What I was saying is that it's, we haven't changed our price at all.
Right.
It's still the same.
I just wish you'd have done it at seven months, just like everybody else was to start with.
Apples to apples.
Right. That's what we said to start with.
And certainly, we understand, and us having the opportunity to go back and change our, our pricing is, is exactly that, not, but we didn't change the pricing on that, but certainly understand, you know, the way it's looked. We bid on a full program, the per-month cost, and they put it in a seven-month program. So, yeah, indeed.
So, Mr. Attorney, looking at both, both companies, did you compare apples to apples on monthly, by month basis?
Well, there was one thing for sure, they didn't have the 30-day out, did they, Greg?
Well, I haven't seen the contract. Let me, y'all, excuse me, just a second.
One of the missing pieces from the Mississippi Mosquito Control proposal is an example contract. I have not seen any language that would provide for an analysis of our rights under a contract or the terms and conditions of a contract. I haven't seen that yet. I have seen Vector of Disease Control's contract. It's a, it's a simple format, and I'm comfortable with that language, and they have been responsive with respect to some of our requirements, the 30-day out being an important consideration for our board. We're trying to move to a, to provisions within our contracts that allow the county to have a lot of flexibility. So your legal team has been trying to introduce that consistently. And, and so they were responsive to that, and I'm, I'm appreciative of that. It gives, it gives us a lot of flexibility in the event we get into a situation where it's clearly not working. There doesn't need to be a whole lot of rigmarole to get the county out of that problem. And so I would, I would obviously want to see contract language before we were able to commit to anything specifically. I still haven't seen that just yet. One of the important provisions, obviously in addition to the 30-day out, is that it is, that it recognizes that it is, in fact, a seven-month contract. That is, it has a date of termination that predates your, this board going out of office. That was an important consideration for us. We didn't want to hamstring the next board coming in with an agreement that it had to live with, because, or, or with the possibility that an argument would be made that we can't bind the successor board, and we've made commitments to a company under an agreement that cannot be enforced. And so we were trying to make sure that we got it terminated at the end of this mosquito season. And so I haven't seen that officially in writing, we do have their statement here before you today, that their intent is to provide for a seven-month contract. But I would, I'd like to see the contract, obviously.
Well, I tell you, the problem I really have with it is that you're gonna charge us $30,000 a month for the seven months when you're gonna be most using all the chemical, but you're still gonna cause us to charge $30,000 when you're not gonna be using chemical. That doesn't make much sense to me. You're gonna use a lot less during the wintertime than you would during the summertime.
Well, there's still the surveillance, larviding, and so forth being done during those times.
I understand that, but I...
And Jay, if I may point something out, that's also true of Vector Disease Control. When we were, when we were talking with them about their proposal as well, I pointed out, you know, it needs to be your best price for the mosquito season, and recognizing that as we move into next year, there'll be another one. And so at some point, I suspect that a board, a board of supervisors is gonna wanna move to a 12-month rotating program. I just expect that. It makes sense to me that you would have your vector control going on all year long so that you don't create problems by having a total cessation of all activity. You would end up with potentially mosquito populations that are harder to control because you're not doing anything with them when you have an opportunity to do it.
Well, I highly doubt, whenever we do get to that point, that it will be the same amount over the winter months.
Right.
So, but we'll find out when we get there.
So far, I haven't, and it just may be that it's, I haven't had enough exposure to it, but I have not seen any indication of pricing these things where in certain months, there's a lesser fee or lesser charge, and then in the more active months, the fee goes up. I haven't seen any indication like that. It would seem to me that the companies are gonna wanna be able to better plan and cash flow things.
Yeah, I guess, my question would be of Vector Control, had you known it was gonna be a 12-month, would your price been lowered rather than $31,000 a month? Or, I mean, knowing, kinda like Mississippi mosquito, yours was 30, looks like 30,500, yours was 31,000 something, so would it, I mean, if you're gonna go to a 12-month, it seems like it would have been a lower, to me, but not price.
Same, same price. Typically, what is done... Excuse me. We, 95% of the money spent for mosquito control is between April and October.
Right.
You know, so if y'all decide to work with us next year, starting in January, same price.
For a whole year?
That's right.
So your price won't fluctuate? It'll be that total price, 200 and...
220,000?
Yes, sir.
Really? Well, that's what I kinda was getting at, I guess, really, in all, actually, what I was, I guess I asked the question in the wrong terms.
Yeah, you did, because I misunderstood, because I, I understood it the way you asked it.
Yeah, I was just asking, how much would it be if you did it for the entire 12 months? What does that break down per month? Well, that's way less. Yeah, that's...
He said, what you're saying, if you did it for 12 months, you'd do it for the same, 220?
It wouldn't be 30,000, 31,000 a month.
Divide 220 into 12.
Right.
Okay.
How much? 18,000?
Okay, all right, that's, yeah, because I, I thought it's the way you understood it.
Right. And so that it's, that it's clear on the record, obviously, we would be better served to evaluate these proposals on an annual basis. That's the way the companies are geared up to present this data. That's the way Vector Control Service Program generally operates, on an annual basis. The only reason we're considering something short of that is the fact that we're coming into the end of the term for this board.
Right.
If the board is okay with the idea of hooking up an annual agreement and going ahead and asking them to present it and provide it as a 12-month program, board is certainly free to do that if it wants to. to do that if it wants to. I thought as a better practice, coming into the end of the term, we know that there's going to be an issue of a new board, let's go ahead and terminate this thing inside of this board term so we don't run into that issue, let the next board decide what they wanna do when they hit the bench.
Yes.
Okay?
Well, we know one of us coming back for sure, so, what you wanna do there, Jared?
Thanks Greg for all that vote of confidence.
I said for sure.
Really, I'm not even going there.
Hey Jay, nothing's for sure anyway.
You just lost a vote, buddy.
I think you picked one up there.
I know me that.
I did not say that. I didn't say a word.
Uh, well, you got both representatives here, are there any other questions of, of the companies before you guys decide, what if anything you wanna do? Any other questions? I want to thank both companies for being willing to come and visit with us and provide these proposals for us to consider, it has been helpful and enjoyable to work with them to this point.
Okay.
I don't remember the name of the company.
Vector Disease Control is 220.
I, I make a motion to go with Vector Disease Control.
Second.
For a seven-month period.
Okay, motion by, uh, Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Wilcox, go with Vector Disease Control, uh, any more discussion? If not, all favors say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see y'all next year.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Laura Oster.
Well, it looks like I have nothing, but I actually have something to add.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I need to add, um, to accept Trust Mark's quote as the lowest quote on lease purchase of road equipment, two face wheel loaders at 1.87% and four John Deere motor graders at 1.83% and authority for the county administrator to execute documents.
What's it?
Two of each machine.
Two, okay.
It was four total.
Are we selling off the other four?
The other five, the five pieces.
Total?
So we need to add that item to the agenda? Make a motion, we add that item to the agenda?
Wait, wait a minute, Mr. Park?
I'd like to add an item too, I don't know where you're gonna have them, but same.
Okay, what you got?
Uh, underwater bridge inspection.
Underwater?
I make a motion.
You gonna be wearing a scuba suit?
I don't own a scuba suit, state aid's got something left to do.
I make a motion to add those items to the agenda.
Can I ask one more thing?
You can't get your raise yet.
The action on the bids that were opened, March 16th, mosquito control.
Oh, what was it on?
We're not gonna do anything with them.
Reject.
I make a motion, we add all those items to the agenda. John, you got anything?
No, no, my bad.
Okay, if, if you got them down, what's, what we're doing, okay, I have a motion to add these items to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, all favors say aye. All opposed? Okay.
The first one, Ms. Laura?
Huh? Wait, what?
That was to, um, accept Trust Mark's the lowest quote on lease purchase of two face wheel loaders, 1.87% and two John Deere motor graders, 1.83% and authority for county administrator to execute the documents.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Not all favors say aye. All opposed?
Was that, was that the same percentage?
No, one was, uh, 1.87 and 1.83.
Why would they vary?
Still 1.8, I mean.
1.8 and 1.87.
That's unreal.
I know, all right, okay. Okay, what's, what's the next one?
Mr. Buster?
Mine?
Going underwater?
Yeah.
We need to vote on that?
Yes.
We did.
We did, okay.
Okay, I just received this this morning, but I'd like to get it back to state aid. Every year, they have underwater bridge inspection and they have two firms that do this statewide, uh, they get on the scuba gear, whatever they have to have and they go down under to inspect and, uh, we have one bridge that we know of that they wanna do that on and that is on Pele Hachi Bay, Callaway, Pele Hachi Bay. And I have a board order which state aid has sent me, authorizing this for the president to sign, that won't cost you any money, uh, the, uh, underwater inspection people will be compensated with federal BR monies and matching, uh, federal bridge credits. So it's a federal type program, they do this every year, we've, we've had the same contract several years to come in and do the underwater bridge inspections.
Is it always Pele Hachi Bay?
No, sir. No, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Wilcox, any more discussion? All favors say aye. All opposed?
No, man, they really get their head rolling stick and sit down there.
Okay, Bridget?
Just recommend that we reject the bids that were open on March 16th for bid number 15-266-1 for mosquito control products and services.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second Mr. Keith.
Motion to approve, denying them.
Yes, motion approved, the denial, reject.
Prove her request to deny them. Okay, second Mr. Keith, any more discussion? Not, all favors say aye. All opposed? Okay. Now who else had one? Was that all of them?
That was it, I think.
What is John?
Okay.
I just wanted to know what it qualifies to be an underwater bridge inspector, you can't see anything in Pele Hachi, not even with the light.
They know how to feel it all, John.
You just gotta feel your way.
It's kind of like being appointed supervisor, John.
Same thing.
Not the supervisor, hell no.
All right, additional, any additional business to be discussed?
Yes, we do, we have a item for executive session.
I may have one item.
Okay.
I don't think it's really, uh, I don't think we need anything else.
What's the item be discussed? What's personnel, litigation?
Contract.
Contract.
Okay.
I make a motion, we discuss the need to go in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, need to go in executive session, second Mr. Bishop.
Oh, sorry, potential litigation.
Potential litigation.
Yeah.
All favors say aye. All opposed?
Any more?
That's one of them.
Wow.
Discuss the name, you gotta make a motion.
Make a motion, go in executive session, discuss, uh, potential litigation.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to go in executive session, uh, Mr. Bishop, second Mr. Wilcox, all favors say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.